All right. Thank you. For the next item, as we kind of previewed briefly during the budget presentation, we are very pleased to provide the board an update on the Henrico County Public Schools Community School Initiative. I know we've heard a number of presentations over the previous years about this, about the vision, then some ongoing work. We've all seen some fruits of labor recently, and now we will hear from Adrian Cole Johnson on sort of where we are and where we're headed.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Greetings Chair Kinsella, school board members, and Dr. Cashwell. Before I jump in, I would like to acknowledge some of my staff members, some of our lead advocates who are here in the audience. We shared that we were presenting today, and so they showed up for support. So thank you all for being here. I am Adrian Cole Johnson, and presenting with me this afternoon is Japira Keyes, Specialist for Family and Community Engagement. Together, we will present an update on the HCPS Community Schools Initiative. It's been quite an exciting time as we focus on integration and understanding of the model across school communities and throughout the great county of Henrico. While Ms. Keyes and I represent the Office of Family and Community Engagement, planning for our community school initiative has been a multi-division effort. Staff members across HCPS, in particular, the divisions of learning, school leadership, and operations have been central partners in this work. It is important to note that the work of the Community School Initiative is in direct alignment with all HCPS cornerstones, as well as with Destination 2025. Fostering an inclusive, safe, and supportive environment for all stakeholders, and cultivating and maintaining meaningful partnerships to enrich student experiences, is at the heart of this model and centers the work that we are building together. We'll jump into the presentation with a reminder of what community schools are, an evidence-based strategy for equitable school improvement. Nationally, this is not a new approach, and districts are investing in the schools, in the community school model. Regionally, Henrico is a leader in becoming a community school district. Understanding our efforts as a place-based strategy where schools partner with varied stakeholders, this could be community agencies, community members, and local government, it truly uplifts Henrico's division-wide commitment by communicating our shared vision of inclusiveness, the right to achieve, and the support to succeed. There are varying connection and entry points when considering the growing HCPS model and our approach. So first, and most broadly, is through all school communities viewing themselves as a community school and interacting as a community school as well. This happens when schools have identified neighborhood assets, when we're leveraging partnerships around shared and common goals, providing responsive family engagement opportunities, and working together with families as collaborators. Next, and more narrowly, are the Community Learning Center sites. These are the after-school program opportunities provided in designated school communities, supported in partnership with the Henrico Education Foundation. Lastly, and most tailored, yet most robust in nature, is the creation of full-service community schools. This is the intentional gathering and convening of stakeholders, under one roof, for one purpose: supporting students and families. This is the newest approach that we've introduced and applied to our Henrico Community Schools model. But before going deeper in each of these areas, we want you to see some of the work in action. All right. Let me do video. All right. Our after-school programs have flourished with the focus on exposure, experience, and academic enrichment. Many of you attended one of our site visits to Cincinnati, Ohio, or Salt Lake City, Utah. With big thanks to Henrico Education Foundation, we were able to bring multidisciplinary teams on both visits to learn from other school districts and their model for success. The learning has been immeasurable and has been a support and guide as we create our roadmap. As we are ensuring the fidelity of our out-of-school-time activities, we are mindful to include creative enrichment opportunities within our schools, as well as the exploration of activities in our communities. Our FACE team meets weekly with our peers at HEFF to address programming, and monthly meetings are held with HCPS literacy and math specialists to evaluate program lessons and activities that support the regular school day. The days are varied, unique, and fun. The Glen Lee Telehealth Clinic continues to bloom under the leadership of Principal Gordon and the multidisciplinary telehealth team. With focused community outreach and awareness efforts, connections with community around the clinic have continued throughout the year. And you'll also see very recent footage just from last week, Tuesday, January 17th, where we hosted the grand opening and first community engagement event at The Oak. It was a great time for everyone to experience The Oak and learn more about the endeavor. Many of you all were there, but all of you all have shown significant support. The Oak has been well-received by a variety of stakeholders, parents, students, community members, partners, and community leaders. Okay, give me a second. I'm gonna mess it up. Can I stop it? Give me one second. I'm gonna pause, and then I'll go to the next one. Okay, here we go. So as these very, excuse me. So as these very pieces, let me do that again. All right. So as these very pieces of the puzzle work together, we, thank you, we alongside so many others are working to enhance outcomes for our learners. HCPS has talked a lot about hope this year, as more than a feeling and actually a measurable strategy to support student achievement. The community school model aligns with the concept of sharing and borrowing hope and resources between those who have them and those who may need a bit more. It is our belief that all schools can benefit from being a community school, and will be able to envision themselves within the model. It is a macro systems approach, yet will be accomplished through intentional work that we are committed to do. Our goal is that Henrico becomes a community school district. This means that all 73 of our school communities have adopted the model, all school communities have at least five unique and high-impact partnerships, and that all schools have a designated community resource coordinator. And Mrs. Ogborne, this may speak to what I imagine you may have been thinking about. So when you think about a community resource coordinator, think about the family advocates that we have in our schools. We've spent a lot of time looking at what we were doing pre-pandemic, what we did during pandemic, and what we're doing now. And so a community resource coordinator is really an iteration of our family advocates. And so in this phase, we have begun intentional connections to our school communities throughout the county, beyond the Title I communities that we continue to serve. We know that when we are in full partnership, we can make great gains in the lives of students. Engagement of all is our focus because engagement is the key. And the community school model centers on focused intention and continuous collaboration of all stakeholders. Next, Japira will share an extended overview of some of the efforts happening across the HCPS community school model.
Thank you, Adrian. Good afternoon, Chair Kinsella, school board members, and Dr. Cashwell. My name is Japira Keyes, Specialist for Family and Community Engagement, and I'm thrilled to come before you today to share more about the work happening in our schools with community learning centers. The seed for our first Community Learning Center, or CLC, was with the award, was planted with the awarding, excuse me, of the 21st Century Community Learning Center grant at the Great Glen Lee Elementary School in 2017. In partnership with the Henrico Education Foundation, we were able to employ grant funds from the Virginia Department of Education to lay the foundation for HCPS's first Community Learning Center. With a focus on academics, increased exposure to enrichment opportunities, and parent engagement, we began to think more intently about the collaboration between families, schools, and the community. We have since expanded to four more elementary schools: Montrose, Laburnum, Holiday, and Ratcliffe, one middle school, Fairfield Middle School, and one high school, Highland Springs. Each school site features an extended-day program, offering intentional academic support for students, and opportunities for families to connect with their school communities. For example, our Highland Springs H2 Promise Program has honed on Principal White's focus on post-secondary planning, ensuring that the three E's that students are enrolled in a college or career training program, enlisted in the military, or employed in the career of their choice. With increased access to mentoring, career planning, and support, as well as field trips to nearby universities, students in our programs have been given the opportunities to explore what they will embark on when they leave high school. It is important to note that while Wilder Middle School is no longer a community learning center site, we have leveraged ESER funds to continue to provide after-school programming to the Wolverine community. Across seven community learning center sites, our average weekly attendance for our extended-day program is 400 students. Out-of-school time, as we know, can be a precarious time for our students and families without viable options. Our extended-day programs provide opportunities for a safe place, as well as to enrich student learning. These students benefit from a multitude of supports, as you saw in the video, including tutoring and homework assistance, mentoring and social-emotional learning, opportunities to explore their personal interests, exposure to careers through field trips and other experiences, and so much more. Programs run not only during the school year in the after-school hours, but during the critical summer months, when concerns about learning loss and safety may arise. In addition, families of program attendees participate in a variety of programming to support their child's education. Parents and caregivers across all sites have experienced unique and robust family activities, including nutritious cooking demonstrations, family art classes coupled with social-emotional learning, and interactive literacy sessions with local authors. Just as the Lions led with our CLC sites, the Great Glen Lee was also the first site of our school-based telehealth clinic. Our telehealth, or telemedicine clinic, allows students to receive care from a healthcare provider without having to leave for an in-person visit. Conducted online with the use of technology, providers are able to assess and treat many of our students' ailments. Some may ask, why have access to a clinic within a school? Our goal is to preserve instructional time, thus impacting student learning. Offering these services during the day can reduce the number of days students will miss school for non-emergency medical conditions. Diagnoses made will help determine if a student can stay in school, or if they need an early dismissal. While this program does not replace a regular visit to a student's care provider, it can provide information and early warnings for families. Logging in November of 2021, the telehealth clinic has truly taken root at Glen Lee, allowing the efforts of the community to model sprout in various ways. Principal Gordon at Glen Lee has embraced the clinic and has led with great enthusiasm and the community in mind. So in continuing talking about the health clinic, regarding impact, we have enrolled 25% of Glen Lee students to have access to clinic services. To note, parents are required to sign a consent form before students are able to receive services. Of students who have visited the clinic, 80% were able to receive services and still return to their classroom without losing seat time. On average, telehealth calls are answered within five minutes of requests to the Children's Hospital of Richmond. Families benefit by not having to interrupt their workday to pick up their child, and every child has had a parent or guardian actively participate in the telehealth call. I would like to give special recognition to our Community Learning Center Coordinator, Marcy Good, for leading this collaborative effort. We will continue to educate families and our staff on telehealth services offered at Glen Lee. Oh, and I have to say, the Great Glen Lee, or one of our family advocates, that is one of her charming moments, to ensure that they are aware of the supports that may benefit students. From HCPS, school, community schools, to our community learning centers, our aim is to continue to build resource-rich school communities and provide integrated student support. The next iteration of our ACPS model are full-service community schools. To utilize a quote shared by one of our family advocates, "Out of a tiny acorn, a mighty oak tree will grow." The Oak Avenue Complex, or the Oak, as we affectionately call it, is the culmination of all of our efforts thus far. Through our various partnerships, it is our aim to provide both integrated and comprehensive support for the whole child and their family. We have imagined this space for quite some time, yet it was actualized this month. Both a space and place, the Oak is our hub for full wraparound resources for students, families, and the community. Nestled on historic Oak Avenue, located at the former Highland Springs High School, the Oak is both a nod to the past and a testament to the growth of the Highland Springs community. We received wonderful feedback from the community at our grand opening celebration. The responses about the reimagined space and the excitement about what is to come are encouraging and remarkable. The community was invited to experience what it would be like to have access to these resources in their own backyard. To quote one of our community members, "Knowing the support that is needed, even within my own neighborhood, I know that there is benefit in cooking classes and parenting classes, since a lot of parents are doing it by themselves. We need all of this support to strengthen our village, and the Oak will be just that." We started this project by conducting a listening tour to engage the community in our efforts in 2021. We then used feedback to identify and connect to area partners to align our efforts with wants and needs of the community. For example, our partnership with the Henrico Community Food Bank has allowed us to create a family essentials closet, where the community may access items to exist with meeting their basic needs. Our collaboration with Henrico Area Mental Health will help us to provide workshops and sessions and care to the community. This highlights just a couple of our external collaborations to make the Oak come to life. HCPS-specific entities that support the project include Student Support and Wellness, federal programs, family and community engagement, and equity, diversity, and opportunities. It is our hope that the work at the Oak will help to mitigate barriers to student learning and unlock the potential to student success. At the Oak, we have planted seeds that are already starting to sprout. Our partnership pods provide opportunities for Henrico agencies, nonprofit organizations, businesses, community members, and other entities working in similar fields to collaborate on better ways to work and impact community outcomes. This has led to multi-layer collaboration, networking, and the focus on how we can collectively make an impact in our community. Central to this effort will be our full-time community resource coordinator, who will work to build upon this effort and grow the collaboration by bridging more partnerships. Key to the community school model is shared leaderships. Our community advisory committee is a mixed group of vested stakeholders who will help to shape and steer the effort of the full-service site. As a family and community engagement specialist, it continues to be my joy to water this effort.
Thank you, Japira. So our work ahead is steeped with creativity and innovation, and it's also filled with diligence, dedication, and true collaboration. Specific to the Oak time line, we are currently focused on strategic alignment amongst partner programming and presence at the Oak, and defining agreements and solidifying our impact. As Japira shared earlier, we have identified approximately 15 high-impact anchor partners to support our budding efforts at the Oak, and partners were identified based on our community listening efforts and opportunities to meet the needs that have already been identified in Henrico. Having clearly identified partnership agreements and shared goals is really giving us a strong start, while still giving us some room to grow. In summary, the proverb "many hands make light work" is exemplified in the comprehensive community school model. We are grateful for you, our school board, who understands the vision and supports the work through your commitment and funding. And so again, thank you, and at this time, we are happy to receive any comments and answer any questions.
Thank you so much for this presentation. We've been, we've been waiting. I know it was very exciting when Reverend Cooper and all of us were at the telehealth at Glen Lee, opened that. And same could be said at the Oak with Ms. Atkins. So it's kind of a toss-up who to start with for comments and questions. I think I'll start with Ms. Atkins.
Thank you, Chair. It's a beautiful thing when your passion aligns with your career, and that's what I see. And it's not just the leaders, but it's your whole staff. That makes a difference when the leadership and the staff are aligned, and those two things match. This is what it produces. I also want to thank Dr. Cashwell for seeing something that had never really been done before and saying, "I trust you." It's important. So thank you. I do have a few questions. And the first one is, can you repeat the list of CLC sites that captured Highland Springs High School, Ratcliffe, Montrose, Glen Lee, but there were some others?
Yes. So we've got Montrose, Ratcliffe, Glen Lee, Laburnum, yeah, Holiday is a newer site. Then we've got Fairfield Middle, and we have Highland Springs High School.
Fantastic. Also, can you share some of the communication efforts that you have planned so that folks know about all of the resources? And of course, that's a work in progress. But the communication efforts that you plan to deliver, to talk about the Oak and its resources?
Absolutely. We have been deeply supported by our communications department, logos, material that we've created. Recently spoke to Mrs. Cox about really drilling into, as we have developed what it looks like, not just things on the web, but just even flyers and information that we can hand out. We've done a lot of just being present in the community, going to doors, going to businesses as well. And so want to always make sure we have something in hand, but also making sure they were outfitting our web presence as well, so that people are aware of the resources and the connections that will be there at the Oak.
Thank you. I appreciate going above and beyond. Whether it was your team knocking on doors, it's important that you touch people seven times. And you certainly did that between knocking on a door, you did it socially on media, you did it in person, you did it with flyers, and you did it verbally, and you also did it with your leadership team. So you have seven touches, which is incredibly important when launching a new effort such as this. And I'm so grateful, from a communications perspective, that you got that. The other piece is, I just want to tell your team, I know that there are many, but since you have two here, how very much I and so many appreciate all that you do. This was just a wink of the work that you do, and I want you to know that I am aware of that, and that I am incredibly proud and job well done. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. Ms. Ogborne?
Sure. Thank you, Adrian, for all your information that you have given us. But I noticed as I was listening to what both of you said and reading the slides that y'all made, that there's kind of a recurring theme about people in the community working with people that they trust. And I mean, having you two ladies here, I'm so glad you're here so we can thank you personally. But that's the crux of it, isn't it? I mean, you can just tell that y'all have such a buy-in for the work that you're doing. And it just means so much, I know, to the people that you serve and to the community. And it's the other theme I saw in everything that you did, is that just so much more is being asked of schools these days. It used to be, you know, it was, you went to school, teacher taught you, you went home. And it's become so much more. It's the center of a community. It's the place where kids get the things that they truly need. And that's what it's all about, is meeting their needs. And I went to the, there's a picture, I don't, it's on the Full Service Community School page, and there's a picture of the Oak complex, the little house that y'all have, that little icon that you have, that one. And I'm looking at that going, that is just kind of encapsulates everything that's there, but also what's more is being asked of schools to meet the needs of kids, because the needs are great. But I also liked that there are people now doing this work, so that teachers can do what they need to do to meet their academic needs. And that's where it really, I think, comes home to roost, that this is the important work. If we're going to keep our teachers in the classroom, we need to give them, they've got to have the strength to keep on going. They, you know, can't meet every need, so this fills that gap, and I think it's so much better for our teachers. But anyway, thank you so much for, I think we're all getting a phone call, sorry, for all the information that you gave us, and for all the work that you do. It's great stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Ogborne. Ms. Shea?
Thanks, Ms. Kinsella. Just a few brief remarks. As Ms. Keyes so eloquently put the impact of the telehealth clinic, I know some of us were able to visit on the Charlotte trip about a year ago, a school that had the embedded health clinic, and have real frank conversations with the administration there. And they shared what a game changer it was in terms of access, attendance, and outcomes for the students. And so I'm really pleased that we have started to kick that door open here in Henrico. And again, we're leveraging outside partnerships as to not put an additional burden on our staff in the building. But as Ms. Ogborne said, to allow the people in our building to teach and to have, you know, and to reach the kids and that sort of thing. And, you know, it's really looking at that, you know, kind of wraparound support. And as your team does so well, leveraging outside partnerships, as a school, we, school division, we're leaning on them. We depend on them. We can't do everything for everyone, but we can provide access to it. And that's what the Oak and our other models are doing so well. And Chief Cole Johnson, I appreciate you talking about the focus beyond Title I schools. I know that in all of our districts, beyond Title I schools, we have concentrated and profound area of need. And so making sure that all of our schools are equipped to have that sort of access is so important. And I'm just really excited to see our new hubs pop up as we go, VREC, the new Q, all of these things, just providing, again, looking across our vast county, our varied county, making sure all students and all families have access to the support. making sure all students and all families have access to the support they need. So, kudos to your team. You have begun to pave the road. I know there's a long journey ahead, but y'all are doing such a tremendous job. Thank you for bringing this update to us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Shea. Reverend Cooper?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. So, I thank the board for allowing me to travel to Utah with this dynamic team. It was a great site visit in that we were able to see where we're trying to be, so thank you. Thank you again, Mrs. Keys and Ms. Cole Johnson, for the review of the information. So, for me, as we talk about continuing to be responsive to our students and communities' needs and ensuring that these programs are delivering the intended outcomes that we define, such as improving student health, reducing barriers in access, reducing absenteeism, and improving academic performance. My questions are, how are we collecting the data? Or rather, what data are we capturing in order to measure the impact of our telehealth clinic at Glen Lee and the programming that will be at the Oak?
Yep. Great questions. We'll start with Glen Lee. And so, and I'll also introduce, as I've been kind of repositioning the team, we have Seth Knight, who's our impact coordinator, really saw the need to have a staff person who was really focused on our impact. I always say to the team, we know we're doing work that matters, but the question we have to ask is, what difference does it make? And so, Seth has been working really closely with the Glen Lee team. We are early in the data that we're collecting, but we have been able to look at, I think, what was shared earlier, return to seat time, so looking at if our students are missing time from school or not, and if the telehealth clinic is making a difference there. We've also looked at how engaged the parents are when going through the process as well. And then, because we have to do the consent forms annually, we're really trying to quantify the numbers of responses that we've gotten. So, we're really excited about the 25% that we've gotten, but right now, we're still looking to increase that. The Oak is exciting and very complex because there are so many different partners, and there are so many different things that we're, that we're working towards. And so, it really looks like having unique partnership agreements based on the shared goals that we at HCPS has and the partners that we're working with, and really drilling in into some really tangible things that we can grasp and get our hands around to make, to make a difference. So, that varies partner to partner, but we'll be more than willing to share that back with the board so you all can have a deeper look into what that looks like for impact.
No, I appreciate that, because two more questions. I'm glad you spoke about the 25%. What's the number telling us as it relates to awareness and understanding of the service for our students and families? And what's been the feedback that you've heard related to any concerns families may be experiencing regarding confidentiality and privacy related to the child's health information?
Mm-hmm. Great point. I would love to get with our team that works most closely there. From my perspective, I haven't heard any specific concerns about confidentiality. What I do know is that, and not even our HCPS staff, the doctors have been there, the nurses have been there, they are at all of the family engagement events that are happening at Glen Lee. Again, back to relationship, they are there and being very present, I believe. They've done some community walks as well, and so, we know programming doesn't make a difference, but relationships do, and so we know that we have to have strong relationships in place in order to support the programming efforts that we're creating. But I would say I'd love to circle back to that team to see if there are any concerns or things that people have shared and can also circle that back to the board.
Appreciate it. The last question for me, as it relates to financial sustainability, much of the fundraising efforts to underwrite the cost of equipment, such as exam tables and telemedicine equipment and other costs associated with delivering services, is provided through HEFF. Do we have an update on any financial concerns or any barriers that we might need to be proactive about addressing to ensure the program is sustainable and can be expanded throughout the division, as Ms. Shea has alluded to?
Great question. Great, and thankfully, we have not, that I am aware of, and we talk about that often, there are no concerns on the horizon. I will say that when connecting with Henrico Education Foundation, there's a lot of support for this community school effort. And so, even as we look at what the build-out will be at the Oak, there are already large partners who are looking to support the funding of that. But again, I will do my due diligence, making sure that I check in with HEFF to see, but we've gotten great response and feedback, financial support for the efforts in play.
I knew you were gonna.
I know. Well, it is such a great question.
I just felt in my spirit, I did.
You knew I was coming in with something more to add, and absolutely, you know, in anything we do where there's, you know, a partnership, whether we're looking at grant funds or funds through the Education Foundation, we're thinking about sustainability. We don't want to put programs in that we're then going to have to pull away. So, you know, sometimes we see a great success, like the Glen Lee Telehealth Clinic, and certainly for our funders and partners to want to continue the work, we have to produce the data that shows that it's meeting the program outcome, so we're really good about collecting that and reporting that. Well, in this case, we see great success, it's something we know we want to replicate, so we all get excited about wanting to do that. So, you know, one reason we have to kind of go slow to go fast is sustainability, it's everything. So, we wouldn't take a next step until we were confident that with whatever else we're able to add or stand up is something that we can sustain for the school community. So, it's a really important factor, and particularly why some of these efforts may seem slow from the outside looking in, because we really want to build a structure that we can sustain.
Well, you know, I'm always of the adage, measure twice, cut once, just because, and so, I'm appreciative, because I agree with Ms. Shea as far as the expansion. I mean, this is definitely something, as Ms. Ogborne has also alluded to, another example of our desire to allow our staff to be able to do their jobs and have the wraparound supports that they're needed. So, thank you both again for that presentation, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. And so, I just want to follow up on something maybe Reverend Cooper was asking about the 25% that have signed the consent form. With this, is it communication of this service? Is it that folks don't feel comfortable with it? Is 20, do we feel 25% of the students is a good number for participation so far? Do you have any gauge on that?
Yeah, we're excited about the 25%. We know that parents and households are still really overwhelmed right now, and so we're excited about the 25. We're always encouraging the team to increase that number, and so, again, whenever there are engagement opportunities, we have an amazing family advocate who's there as well, you know, utilizing the individuals in our CLC program. We're constantly sharing that information, a lot of support from the principal with the principal memos and things of the sort, but also understanding that it may take a while for people to really understand the concept. And so, one thing that I've challenged us to do is to just break it down a bit, and so that it's understandable and digestible for parents and families, but I'm certain that the number will grow, but we are enthused about the 25%.
Okay. Fantastic. I mean, less is more when you're breaking it down for the families, right? Make it really simple.
Correct.
Just so that everyone just gets how wonderful it is, really. And I love the graphic, and it makes me think about what everybody's alluding to as the next steps, right? Like what's coming next, right? Virginia Randolph, and then we're going to have the Quiacuzin. But will it look similar? Because then you referenced another fantastic piece of this process, which is community feedback or stakeholder feedback, right? What does everyone want for their community? So, it will not necessarily look the same.
No.
Right?
Our county is so unique and diverse, we wouldn't want it to look the same. But what we have done with building the Oak, we have a pretty good process in place now. And so, just as we went through a community learning series for the Oak, we would do the same for each of our hub sites, connecting to events that are happening in those areas, making strong connections with the schools that feed into those areas as well, and really using that feedback to help guide the components of those full-service community school sites.
Wow, fantastic. I mean, just the work you all do is really hard work, and just thank you. Thank you for the presentation and all you do. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you again to the FACE team and all who are here to represent the incredible work. You continue to make us proud.